City Council 2022 Priority Setting meeting. We have a lot to dig into in three hours, so I'm going to stop here and just introduce City Manager Bob Nisbet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I think we should take roll call, Jessica, and then I'll introduce Victor for our Spanish interpretation option.
Thanks. Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Here.
Councilmember Rorback?
Here.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Deborah, you're muted. Are you here?
I think she might be having some connection issues, but Vice Mayor Penrose is here. Mayor Reddick?
Here. Thank you.
Have a corn.
And Victor, if you could, you're queued up next.
Gladly. Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Honorable Council Members, Mr. Nisbet, Ms. Enberg, and all city staff. Victor Hernandez, Spanish interpreter. Buenos dias, buenas tardes. Les queremos dejar saber a todos ustedes hoy que esta reunión será interpretada en español. Para poder acceder lo que es el canal de audio, usted tendrá que hacer clic en el botón de interpretación, que es un icono de un globo o un mundo al fondo de su pantalla en la barra de tareas de esta plataforma de Zoom. Después de que usted haga eso, aparecerá un menú y entonces usted podrá seleccionar su idioma. Muchísimas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor. So I'll go next and just kind of introduce the meeting to the council and to the public. This is our annual priority setting, as the mayor said. This is around the time we have historically done it the last few years, third week in March. And this sets us up nicely to then incorporate what we hear today into a work plan and also into the upcoming fiscal year budget, which the council will take up in June. So the game plan for today, there is a more detailed agenda that we will follow than what was put out. And the first forty-five or fifty minutes of the agenda, just so the public knows, is some presentations by staff, and the purpose of these is to give some context and to get people's wheels turning. We have had two listening sessions. We've done some survey work. We have a work plan that we're currently working on from priorities that the council has already set. And so we want to get people's wheels turning on what we're working on, what we've heard from the public already, get the council's thoughts going, and then this also gives an opportunity for the public then to chime in. So we have public comments scheduled for right after the presentations, and then that'll probably be a good time for a break. And then that gives plenty of time to turn this back to the council. At that point, they will have heard from the public, read all the information, and it's their time to roll up their sleeves and tell everyone what they've heard, what's important to them, and have a dialogue really among themselves about what collectively they've heard from the community and what's important for them as a group, as a five-member council. So Matthew will be given the first presentation on our current work plan. Then we have a presentation from Karen and Erica Wood on one of the items that was on the plan from last year, the Coastside Recovery Initiative. And that document just came out and has been made public, so that'll be very interesting and another way for people to get thinking about what we should prioritize in the future. And then we have Maggie and Colleen, who will summarize the two listening sessions we had and the results of a recent online survey. I think Colleen told me we received about sixty responses. So she will quickly hit that and hit a couple themes, two or three themes that came out of that. Before I introduce Matthew, I guess maybe at risk of stating the obvious, I want to make a comment about why prioritize. It sounds obvious why we would prioritize, but I think the devil's sometimes in the details of really how important it is to the community, to the council, to staff. It's an agreement, and it's really important that there's collective agreement so that expectations can be met and staff can actually work most efficiently. So why is it important? So we, as staff, can certainly, or as a group, cannot prioritize work. And we can come up with more things to do, and as always, the city staff and the council is going to do their best to keep working on everything that the community and the council believes is a priority. But again, at risk of stating the obvious, the more that is on the collective plate, and if it reaches a point where we simply can only do the best we can do with the resources we have, what happens is everything goes slower. So that's just a function of not prioritizing, right? We're all human. We all only have so much time in the day, and there's only so much that we can all do. And so we can always load on more and do so happily, but at the end of the day, without prioritization, staff ends up making decisions on how to prioritize their work. This, believe it or not, happens more than you think. Every day, we all get up, we look at our calendars, and we make decisions on how we're going to work that day. And sometimes we get stuck on projects, and we say, okay, I'm going to put that to the back burner and work on something else today. This happens all the time because we consistently have a lot of work on our plate. So prioritizing communicates to the public and to staff what, how we should make those decisions. And I think it's really important that we know kind of what's a high priority, what's a medium priority, what's a low priority. In the past, the council has set broad areas, broad areas, which we will get into today when Matthew goes through the work plan. But I think today, after last year specifically, we've realized that we want an opportunity for the council to go a little deeper and not only just tell us what their five, four, or five highest level priorities are in terms of high level, you know, housing, homelessness, but go to that next level of looking at the tasks, the projects, and the programs that you're asking us to work on to fulfill the goals that are established on housing and the other priorities. And when we do that, I think that's where it's really important that we get a gauge of what the council collectively agrees on. And again, if we can actually get there on our list, and we'll be putting the list together as we go, a suggestion of high, medium, or low. We don't have to get too complicated, but just those three gauges, if, once we get a list together, if the council can say, okay, these ones are high, these ones are medium, these ones are low. Very, very helpful to staff. Again, the problem is when we're overloaded, things end up moving slower. We get bogged down. And I will also say that we're prone to more mistakes. So the whole idea of prioritizing, why prioritize? We can work more efficiently. We can meet the expectations of the community and the council, and we're less prone to mistakes, and we work more efficiently. So that's my spiel on why it's so important. I'm right on time. At this point, I'm going to kick it over to Matthew, and we will start the three presentations that we have to get the process rolling. Matthew?
Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Mayor and council members, for this opportunity. I'll try to be brief, but also provide enough context to help guide the discussion later in this meeting. So as Bob mentioned, this is an annual process. We've done it for many years, and I think we're good at it. I think we do a good job of honing in on the highest priorities and realistic work plans. And today, I just want to go through the work plan that was developed last year, identify some highlights and some great wins that we've achieved, some areas that we've found challenge, and what the next year looks like. As you see on the cover slide, this is our twenty-one through twenty-three priorities. Last year, the priority areas were so large and so encompassing that we collectively decided to make it a two-year work plan. And we're, you know, about a little over a third of the way through the first, through the work plan, almost through the first year. So the first thing I'll do is I'll just remind everybody of what priorities were set at a high level last year. Affordable housing, which has, as we know, has been in our list for a long time, and we make incremental progress through this. But obviously, we're hopeful to see some floodgates open and see some additional housing developed to provide new opportunities for people to remain in our community. The second is public health, safety, and emergency preparation, and that really encompasses the ongoing response to the pandemic, law enforcement, and the work we've done around public safety and emergency preparation and planning for our community. Community climates, climate resilience, sustainability encompasses all things environmental sustainability, the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, different ordinances around electrification, and all the work that is done mostly in our Public Works Department to be leaders in environmental sustainability as a city. Economic recovery and development has been on the priority list for a couple of years. Started out just as economic development focused on how to bring more businesses to our community and improve our downtown area to make it more business-friendly. And then, of course, with COVID, it has shifted to economic recovery and looking at our economy as a whole and how to make it more resilient. And then redistricting was the fifth priority, which is something that we're required to do under current state law. We did this a few years ago, and of course, had to do it again this year following the latest census as a state requirement. So just a couple of highlights I wanted to share in some of these different areas. First and foremost are the housing efforts. I won't spend a lot of time on this. Jill Ikus, our community development director and our housing consultants, gave a very thorough presentation. At last week's city council meeting, there was robust discussion. But for those who weren't able to attend, just a couple of highlights. You know, the council hosted a large workshop in November looking at housing opportunities and the challenges that we face on each one of those, identified some sites to focus on. We've hired a housing specialist. We met them last week, and they're doing great work to move this important priority forward. We have an RFQ currently out for the 555 Kelly property for affordable housing. And our housing consultants are continuing work on feasibility of housing on our 880 Stone Pine property. And, you know, most importantly, there's work happening around actual development. We have active applications for housing and affordable housing right now and a very active project we're working on with the County of San Mateo to develop some farmworker housing. So lots of progress in that area, and we're really excited about the feedback we got last week and will incorporate that into the work plan going forward. Also, under housing, it may not be as clear, but our community development department worked with the planning commission and the council, worked really hard and finalized both the short-term rental ordinance update and the ADU ordinance this year. And the short-term rental update is with, ordinance update is with the Coastal Commission right now for certification. And the ADU ordinance was certified with some modifications by the Coastal Commission. There's a little bit more work to do on the staff side, and then it'll go to HUD for final review. Under emergency preparation, the local hazard mitigation plan was finalized and adopted by the state in January of this, or December of this year. This was a county-wide process with some local focus for Half Moon Bay. And this document's really important because it allows us to apply for emergency funds with FEMA. And it really is guiding the work we're doing on our emergency operations plan, our crisis communication plan, and evacuation and disaster-specific plans. On the crisis communication plan and the emergency operations plans, these are internal documents that guide the work of city staff and departments in addressing emergencies. And we've made a lot of progress on those this current year. Both are probably about eighty percent complete, and we hope to have these finalized, plan to have these finalized before the end of the fiscal year so that we can present them to the council, the community, and then refocus our efforts on the disaster planning itself. Also, under public safety, the CARES program has been a great success. And as you know, that launched last week, and we're really proud of this program and looking forward to its success and appreciate the support we've gotten. I did receive a correction. The ADU, or the, yeah, the ADU ordinance needs to go to HCD, not to HUD. So the Housing and Community Development Department is where that goes for approval. Under environmental sustainability, lots of work completed, and the electrification ordinance was approved, adopted by the council earlier this year and actually went into effect last week. So really exciting to see that moving forward. And as we know, that we'll be monitoring the impacts of that ordinance and making adjustments in the future. Under coast side, or under economic recovery and development, the biggest item we worked on this year was the Coastside Recovery Initiative. The planning phase has been complete. The report has been published. It is beautiful and comprehensive and a really exciting document. And we'll be guiding a lot of other efforts as we move forward. You'll hear much more about that in our next presentation. And then redistricting, we've finalized the maps. The map, it's been adopted. We'll come for second reading soon. And then, of course, lots of work to educate the community and coordinate that map into our upcoming election. Talking about challenges, a couple of areas that we didn't make the progress we had hoped for a variety of reasons. Our town center planning project and overall downtown improvements work. The town center planning project was delayed really in lieu of the Carter Park project, which early this year, we notified that we were receiving state funding for. And so that took precedent within our CIP. Lots of exciting things happening with that, but it also meant the town center planning had not begun. In addition, there's some downtown improvements we've been looking at that are really closely tied to the town center planning project. You'll, again, you'll hear this later, but a very strong recommendation coming out of the recovery initiative to address these items specifically, and so these will definitely be prioritized in the coming fiscal year. The Climate Action and Adaptation Plan was moving forward, but as the electrification ordinance was prioritized, we kind of flip-flopped them. And you'll see in the next slide how the phasing works on these things. And the electrification ordinance was supposed to happen in year two of the work plan with the cap happening this year. Those are flip-flopped, and so work will move forward next year on the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. And then sort of under the umbrella of the recovery initiative was digital infrastructure planning. And that really is an important item. We had hoped that some of the infrastructure funding from the feds would help us move this forward. Several meetings were held with the county and partner agencies. It turned out the funding that we had hoped for wasn't really a good fit for our community. So we'll need to regroup on this and prioritize it. We know that this is a really important item. And then really quickly, just looking into year two of the work plan, some of the most important things will be trying to entitle some of these housing development applications. Hilltop Mobile Home Park expansion is a really important one that we hope to be entitled this year, as well as others that we're working on, including the county project. The housing element and implementation of the housing element and the LCP zoning will really set the stage for more housing and providing more opportunities to develop affordable housing. And that'll be an important project this coming year. With the EOP and the Crisis Communications Plan and the Hazard Mitigation Plan being finalized this fiscal year, we will refocus our energy on evacuation and disaster-specific emergency planning. Some of that work is already underway with the county and our partner agencies, like the Coastside Fire Protection District and the Sheriff's Office. And we hope to, early in the next fiscal year, finalize those documents and get them out to the community for education and input. The recovery initiative moves into the implementation phase. And as mentioned, under redistricting, we have to move into integrating the new districts map and coordinating with the upcoming election. And my final slide on this item and the final piece of context, this is just a Gantt chart that really shows over the two years that we planned where things stand. The items that are in green are items that have started and been successfully completed or are really making good, successful progress forward. The items in kind of the brownish-orange are ongoing, and you can see where they continue through, all the way through quarter four of the next fiscal year. The items in blue are the items that are planned to be started at a future date. And if it's outlined, it just means that we already started it earlier than originally planned. And the items in red are the items I indicated as where we ran into some challenges. But as you can see, they're all scheduled to move forward in the coming fiscal year. And with that all in my presentation, happy to take any questions on this now or later on in the meeting as we talk further. Okay, I think we'll turn the time over to Karen Decker and Erica Wood to talk about the recovery initiative.
Great. Thank you so much, Matthew. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council, and community. My name's Karen Decker. I'm the project manager for the Coastside Recovery Initiative. I'm joined today by your economic development consultant, Erica Wood. Let's dive in and talk about economic recovery through the lens of the Coastside Recovery Initiative. So you just heard from Matthew about economic recovery and development as a priority in the current year. And where we're at now is the important phase of beginning the implementation work. As Matthew said, the final report is completed and it is being distributed. We just sent a news release yesterday, and we're continuing with the dissemination plan, making sure that key audiences like our county and state representatives, funders, business and nonprofit leaders, all have eyes on this information. Just a few observations following the release of the report. We recognize the value of this community process that got us to this point. This is a great example of civic engagement, and we still have task force members checking on progress and asking us how they can help. And it's been a joy to work alongside them. We also know equity needs to continue to be at the center of this process moving forward. If anything is resulting from COVID, needs have not gone away. Lots of evidence of that throughout the report. And we need to have a clear focus on our most economically vulnerable residents and stay true to our guiding principles. We don't see economic recovery separate from large issues like affordable housing or digital infrastructure. And we're looking at economic development in a comprehensive way. We're very much looking for where there's synergy to optimize our efforts to make a greater impact. And that can mean alignment with existing programs, or it could mean building new partnerships that result in action, something everybody wants to see. And you will see evidence of this. For example, Coastside Recovery Initiative is going to surface in a few different ways in the upcoming capital improvement program recommendations. As Matthew mentioned, the downtown planning had to take a backseat in lieu of exciting developments. But in a sense, that was picked up by the task force for Team Vibrant, and you'll see Streetscapes and Revitalizing Heritage Maine represented in the CIP, for example. You'll also see alignment between the Coastside Recovery Initiative and the Community Services Financial Assistance Grants Program at an upcoming council meeting when the CSFA subcommittee reports out. So all that to say, we have momentum, and a great example is turning our attention to the next economy, which ushers in Team Innovate. So this working team had a lot of discussion around how critical vocational training and higher education are in getting us to that next economy. When we see headlines in the Half Moon Bay Review, like Latinx students are five times as likely to receive Ds and Fs, or when eighty-five percent of the people in accommodation and food service jobs are people of color making thirty thousand dollars a year, it's a call to action. So the Coastside Recovery Initiative helped inform some of these discussions and data points. And while the task force no longer convenes, this workforce development roundtable that was spearheaded by one of our task force members symbolizes the right people at the right time coming together to solve complicated problems, which has been a huge goal from the kickoff of the Coastside Recovery Initiative. Another way we're trying to make this recommendation a reality is through a partnership with the College of San Mateo. The Coastside Recovery Initiative was consulted on the Coast to College Lift Program that helps students with transportation needs going back and forth from CSM to the coast side at ten different pickup locations from Half Moon Bay to Montero. Also related to CSM, it's been seven, it's been eleven years since we last had a higher education site on the coast. And when a college president asks, what do you need? You know, show me a recommendation. You show her a recommendation. So efforts are underway to bring classes and academic support services back to the coast. And we're assisting CSM in doing their due diligence and exploring different sites and expanding on the great work already underway with the Coastside Resilience Hub, which your council helps sponsor, working closely with the Boys and Girls Club, Cabrillo Unified, and Cabrillo Education Foundation. Another area we see is having tremendous opportunity is farming and agriculture. And I'd like to invite Erica to take us through the rest of the presentation.
Thanks so much, Karen. And you'll see the recommendation on this slide in front of you. And I will say that there are several dimensions to this. I'm going to hone in on one. And, you know, agriculture has been a vital part of this region's history, but it does face an uncertain future. And there are troubling signs from a decline in farms and farmworkers and a thirty percent drop in agricultural production value in recent years. So farms are really at this great transition point, and that combined with the impacts of climate change that we're all seeing really compel new thinking and new ways of doing business. And I just want to give a nod to Councilmember Jimenez for bringing the topic of regenerative ag forward at your last meeting. You all talked about it, and we talked about it too. We talked about it a lot within the Team Eco discussions. So what are we doing to make this a reality? Well, it starts with this interesting place when you drive down Highway One called the Mushroom Farm, which was the former Campbell's Soup Production Facility. It's in Pescadero, and there's some really exciting work that's happening to think about regenerative ag and renewable energy. It sits on seven hundred and fifty-three acres of property. There are hundreds of thousands of square feet of indoor agricultural spaces and mixed-use spaces. So it's really ideal for prototyping some of these new methods. We have a commitment from the executive team of the Mushroom Farm to really help with being a job incubator, if you will, and becoming a future employer for people who are interested in career opportunities and resilience technologies and ag tech farming methods. And then we can bring our partners like the Cabrillo School District and their Ag Sciences Program and the College of San Mateo that Karen just talked about to think about how we create certificate programs, two-year degree programs in these new and emerging fields. And then just a little further down the road is the University of California, Santa Cruz, my alma mater. And there is something called an Institute for Social Transformation run by Dr. Chris Benner. He spoke at our first task force meeting. They are doing incredible research and development work around how we produce, process, distribute, and consume food. They too have expressed an interest in partnering with us in this whole arena. So we really see that this recommendation has the potential to create new industries and jobs and getting the next generation excited about farming in our food systems. There's a lot of pieces here. So if we could bring them together for the benefit of the coast side, that would be great. I think there could be benefits beyond the coast side, and there's a real opportunity to be the Ag Center, Regenerative Ag Center in California. I think there could be benefits beyond the coast side and there's a real opportunity to be the Ag Center, Regenerative Ag Center in California. So the path forward, we're excited that the report is done. That's a significant milestone that we can check off our list. But there is still a lot of work to do. And while Karen and I touched on two recommendations today, I'll just remind you all that there are 15 and we want to push all of them forward and make them a reality. And we do see that they are nested within this bigger economic development agenda that brings along with it some of the challenges we face around transportation, housing, digital infrastructure, childcare, climate. And that they, these issues, the work-adjacent issues have to be addressed to ensure success. And that brings with it the opportunity to really work across priority areas that the city has named. And we see a lot of opportunity for synergies, which is great. The last thing I'll say is that I do think we have a level of readiness. And you'll all recall that we went for the really big stretch opportunity with the EDA Build Back Regional Challenge Grant. While we weren't successful in getting that grant, I said to you, and I believe this to continue to be true, that we will be successful in getting funding. And it gave us, you know, a level of readiness to go after different grant opportunities. And as a matter of fact, I have been contacted by the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative, who has been tracking our work, wanting to meet again. And I'm optimistic they will want to provide some financial support. So all of that to say, I just thank the council for your support, your championship, making this a priority. And I hope it will continue to be a priority. So with that, I think we're open for some questions if there are any.
Madam Mayor, we can pause here and see if there's any questions. If not, the next portion is again, a summary of the listening sessions and the survey. And that will be relatively quick before we then move to public comment. So turn it back to you. It seems like there's a couple of questions.
Yeah, Councilmember Jimenez.
I have a lot of questions, you know. This is one of my interests, you know, when it comes to the economic recovery of the community. You really touched on a lot of, a lot of points that I've been working on for the last few years. In last, during the listening, the first listening session, I asked Chris, sorry, I'm, you know, about if we can actually get a like an amount, you know, like I'm saying, like the, how much income is generated, you know, from our businesses? Hotels, restaurants, agriculture, you know, where we have a high number of essential workers that live with an income of $25,000 to $3,000 a year. I'm just interested in, in that amount, you know, to make a point. You know, so I'm interested in knowing that. You know, as you know, I'm very interested in agriculture as well, you know, that we want to preserve, you know, the agricultural business of the coast. You know, and maybe, you know, farmers in the coast, farmers and farm workers in the coast. We might not feed the world, but at least we can feed the Bay Area. You know, so that to me is very important. You know, I don't want to lose agriculture. We are in danger. I mean, you already mentioned 30%, you know, agricultural business has dropped in the last few years. And if we go 30 years back, you know, you're going to see that we have lost about 50% of agriculture, you know, economy in the coast, you know. So that is, it's scary. It's sad. A lot of things have happened and a lot of things have not happened. And that's why I know priority settings like today, you know, are very important for me to make points about what we need to do. You know, and to me, it's not about reinventing the wheel. No, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. But if the first wheel is moving too slow, we have to make up another wheel. We have to come up with another wheel, you know, to assist the first wheel, you know, to move a little faster. So that's, you know, that's why, you know, for me, you know, the agricultural business, you know, as you know, you know, a lot of our farm workers, you know, they're, they don't have a lot of education, you know, college education, you know, to make the, the income that people have been talking about. You know, on the, on the articles when we are asking for housing, you know, for essential workers and comments like, you know, maybe they should be educated, maybe they should, you know, receive training. They have the education, they have the training to feed us, right? If we don't have the farm workers, you know, what are we going to eat? Our economy, you know, our economy in the coast, you know, I mean, come on, you know, restaurants or hotels, you know, what are we getting to? So this, you know, this topic, you know, is for me to actually show, you know, how much income is being generated by, you know, what people consider low-skill workers. That to me, they're not, you know, we say, you know, they are masters of the land. They're the ones that feed us. So I want to know, you know, if we can show, show some numbers, you know, about, you know, Chris already mentioned, you know, about how much money is generated by, you know, by our hotel industry of a coast. So that, you know, is just to make sure that we save our community, you know, we save our jobs, we save our, you know, economy. So this is, you know, this is it for me. You know, economic recovery is really big, you know, for me on the, right next to housing. So I really want to thank you for your presentation and please, you know, show, give us some numbers, you know, so we have a very visual of what we are talking about.
And Madam Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jimenez, thank you. I have definitely not forgot your question. In fact, I'm looking at my notes. It was the first listening session. A very simple question, but the answer is a little more complicated to get, to get to it. But we are working on it and we do plan to provide our best shot at answering that question that you asked. Thank you.
Councilmember Brownstone.
Yeah. Quick question for Erica. You mentioned that Chan Zuckerberg is interested in some of our projects and possible funding opportunities in the future. I was just curious as to which projects you think they are most interested in at this point.
Yeah, we haven't honed in on any specifics yet. Karen and I met with the Community Affairs Director, who I know is a former colleague and her team, oh gosh, several months ago. And I'll say their interest was piqued around all of the recommendations. My instinct tells me that what we're talking about here in terms of support for farming and farm workers may be an interest area for them, as well as some of our recommendations coming out of Team Thrive, small business support, nonprofit support, strengthening our safety net, those kinds of issues. But we'll be sure to let you know after we have our meeting in a couple of weeks.
Great. I look forward to hearing more. Thank you.
Vice Mayor. Yeah, you're muted, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, Erica, a question for you. One, a comment first. I'm really grateful and excited about your relationship with UC Santa Cruz and their, their interest in, in joining with us and in making us a more sustainable city. I'm wondering, in the ag culture, if there is a connection that we have developed with UC Davis? And if not, I'd like to suggest that since they're the big ag school, that we consider talking to somebody at Davis. That's it.
Agreed. Yeah, so I, leading away from what our Vice Mayor just said, it seems to me, you know, UC Extension Service, you know, has a, has a role at Elpis Ranch and they had an office here, I think, for a while. I don't know if they still do. But I think that's, that's one opportunity. And during our discussions on cannabis a few years ago, we interacted with a guy, Martin Legod, who is a venture capitalist, you know, on, on Sand Hill Road. And he was developing expertise in vertical and hydroponic agriculture. He had made that his specialty. I think he's, he lives, or he has a second home in Miramar. I'm not sure which. But he is a local dude and I think he might have some good ideas. Chan Zuckerberg, the venture capital community that's just over the hill. I, I think if they're looking at this deeply, you know, maybe they're a source of funding or technical expertise or something like that. So I, you know, I wouldn't leave that stone unturned. And then even Rocket Farms said, you know, a couple of years back that they were looking into building some sort of a center to study, you know, agricultural practices. I don't know where that is. But there seems to be a lot of interest and it might be, be whoofus to sort of pull together, you know, workshop or a panel discussion with various of these partners, you know, to see what they're thinking, what the possibilities might be. But I think we have to do a convening of some sort of, of all these different people who are looking at this issue, including UC Santa Cruz. So I'm really glad that the initiative, you know, looked at these issues and, I mean, all the issues. I think it's, it's very well done. We'll have a chance to talk more about it as we move along. So just a couple of comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if there's no more questions at this point, as you just said, we'll, we will have time to circle back to this subject later in the agenda and I assume that we probably will. So with that, I'll turn it over to Maggie and Colleen and they will summarize the listening sessions and the recent survey before we turn it back to you in public comment.
Is everyone seeing the slides? Okay.
Yes. Hi, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Maggie Rodriguez and I am an Admin Assistant for both CMO and Admin Services. Recently, the city held two virtual listening sessions on March 10th and 13th. These sessions gave residents the opportunity to elaborate on our current priorities, but also gave them a chance to voice any concerns regarding issues that they would like to see as future priorities. We had 52 combined total public attendees. And the top themes that we noted were affordable housing, specifically for farm workers and teachers, redistricting, and infrastructure concerns regarding flooding and citywide maintenance, and the lack of a community pool. Some of the other comments were the annexation of Moon Ridge and Miramar, the implementation of the Coastside Recovery Initiative and the local coastal plan, and improvements for bike and pathway, bike and pedestrian pathways. And on the next slide here, you will see a more in-depth summary of the notes. Please know that not all the public comments are listed here. So if you feel like we missed something, don't worry. We have all of our notes from the first two sessions and we will include all of those in our forthcoming written report. Just going to give everyone a few minutes to look it over and then I will hand it off to Colleen.
All right, Bob, Bob gave the nod. So good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers and members of the public. My name is Colleen and I am the Communications Program Manager. As part of the listening sessions process, we created a survey as an additional resource for people to share their feedback and opinions. We had an online survey, which we marketed on all of our digital communications channels, as well as hard copy surveys, which were distributed to ALAS, the Library, Senior Coastriders, the TED-Ad Cock Community Center, and outside of City Hall. In total, we received 62 completed surveys in both English and Spanish. 22 were online and 40 were in paper. 20 of the 62 responses were provided in Spanish. On the survey, we asked three, three questions, which were, in 2021, City Council identified the five priorities below for fiscal year 2021, '22. Please rank the below priorities in order of the importance to you. So if they would see the five priorities. The next question was, considering the current priorities, is there anything specific you think the city should be prioritizing? What within the existing priorities would you like the City Council to focus on? And then finally, the third question, are there any additional priorities you think the City Council should focus on in the upcoming fiscal year? Based on the five priorities, the three that were named most highly and the rankings were Public Health, Safety and Emergency Preparation, Economic Recovery and Development, Affordable Housing, and then the mentions of Community Climate Resilience and Sustainability. Some additional themes that were mentioned in both questions two and three were traffic, a new community pool, and roadway safety, which includes more stoplights and bicycle pedestrian accessibility. I would like to also note that in our recent public safety survey, traffic was also the number one issue identified by residents. We appreciate all of the valuable input we received from the public at both the listening sessions and via the survey. So that concludes the information that Maggie and I would like to present. If there are any questions, we would be happy to answer them. If not, I will turn it over to Bob.
Madam Mayor, not seeing any additional questions at this point, but again, there'll be plenty of time. We're actually ahead of schedule. At this point, we're going to turn it back to you and Jessica to take public comment. And then after public comment, depending on how that long, how long that goes, council can decide if you want a five-minute break or not before giving it over to the council.
Yeah, I know, I will make a break.
All right, so I'll turn it over to you. I see one hand raised. There looks to be about 10, 12 members of the public here. I'll turn it over to you and Jessica for our normal manner in which we go through public comment.
Okay, if any members of the public do wish to address the council on the priority setting process, this is the opportunity for public comment. So please use the raise your hand feature and I will start with Hillary Stamper. Mayor Reddick assuming three minutes.
Yes, that works.
Okay, thanks. Our first speaker is Hillary Stamper.
Hi there. I think that so far, the presentations have been great and I'm really excited about a lot of the things you guys have talked about. I just wanted to add in that when it comes to priority setting and what people are thinking about, sometimes we're thinking about things that are not broken, but that we rely on. So we don't think about them, but we rely on them every day. And a big one of those items is the Coastal Trail. You know, we've done a pretty good job of late of making sure that the Coastal Trail is functioning. We just upgraded some of the parts along Poplar. But we really need to make sure that that does not fall to the side because it's used for both really important recreation by residents and tourists, but also as a means to get from point A to point B when people are moving around the coast. So please make sure that this does not fall away when setting priorities and just continue to think about how we make sure that the Coastal Trail is maintained and that we're being really proactive in any way we can to keep building it, focusing on our connections in the community around the Coastal Trail. You know, there are places now where it's getting really hard to complete the Coastal Trail in Miramar. And we need to be thinking about this and how it impacts people's ability to get to El Granada, up to the breweries there and all the places that are so fun to commute to via bike and running and walking. The second thing I wanted to mention, I'm on the Parks and Rec Committee. My comments are just as a resident though. But one thing I noted in some of the listening sessions on both Magnolia Park and Smith Field were that people were also really interested in beach volleyball courts. And this to me speaks to a broader issue of the importance of thinking about our teenage population on the coast and making sure that we have activities that continue to engage them in pro-social ways. So right now, we don't have a lot of places other than the beach, which is largely used as a hangout place and even more largely used as a place to have bonfires at night. And I would really like to see us using our resources to create more opportunities to give kids healthy things like playing fields and beach volleyball courts, other recreational pool. Just thinking about how do we engage that portion of our population in a time when they've really been hit hard by COVID? They're supposed to be becoming more independent and the coast doesn't have a ton of resources to do independent things. So what can we offer them? And I think that recreational opportunities help both children, teens, and adults alike. And they bond us together as a community, even when we're facing all of these cultural divides that are going on in our country. So they're great for mental health and all those things. And that's all it says. So they're great for mental health and all those things. And that's all it says. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. Our next speaker is Lynette Kirkhoes.
Hi, thank you very much for this session. It's great to hear the status of the various priorities of the city and some really well-researched and thought-out reports. I just wanted to raise my hand as I didn't have an opportunity to fill out the survey, which is to put a strong recommendation for focusing on a community pool and rec center in line with what Hillary was talking about, a place for kids to gather. And it's one of those things that it seems insurmountable because it's such a big dollar amount, and it's such a land use challenge, which is always hard in the coastal zone and in this city. But I strongly encourage the city to take on this big challenge. Looking at the library and the gymnasium and some of the wonderful community features we've added in my time here on the coast, I think it's doable, and I think there's a large group of parents of our aquatic sports teams that feel the need super strongly because our kids, as many may not know, cannot host home meets in our high school pool, which is very old and substandard. And so as a parent who now has a freshman swimmer, I understand the real issue of that, of having our kids always, every meet is an away meet, even our home meets, we have to have in other people's pools. And I feel like we could do it. And it's not just for the high school aquatic sports. It's for local community swimmers and a place for kids to learn to swim. La Pati Paline has been great about scholarships. But it's a pretty tiny facility, a tiny resource we really need in this community. Where learning to swim is essential for public safety, given that we're a coastal community. We really need a public pool. And so I just wanted to strongly encourage the council to help us form that vision for where that pool could be. There's lots of ideas about where it might be, but to put that effort out to both plan for it so that we can put forth something that we could get funding for with a, with a vision of where to site that kind of facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette. Our next speaker is Paulette Eisen.
Yes, hi, everybody. Um, so I just want to say a few things. One, just piggybacking on the last caller, you know, and Hillary, recreational opportunities are really important for everybody, children to seniors. And the most important resource we have are existing resources, and we need to make sure that we're taking care of those. So whether it's the coastal path, which absolutely, we need to look at the erosion issues and make sure that they are safe and that, and that their bridges are upheld. And, you know, that detour that has been going on for years now is so frustrating to myself personally, trying to get to the Miramar area and pass that, whether I'm biking or walking, it's, it's a real issue. And, and our parks, working on our parks in Carter Park, again, major opportunities there. Can't wait till that really gets off the ground already. But our existing parks, to make sure whether it's Smithfield, whether it's volleyball at Magnolia, wherever, whatever it is, the point is we have existing facilities that we need to improve so that we can make better use of it. And so to me, that's where our dollars first and foremost should be going into. Another major project, as far as I'm concerned, is I'd like to see a real master drainage plan that includes Roosevelt and Key Hope. Can't just ignore it, push it under the rug, and pretend that we have some kind of comprehensive drainage plan because we don't. You can't have it without these other two entities. And again, back to infrastructure, sidewalks, safe walking and biking. There are so many things that the biking and pedestrian committee, when I was on it, recommended to the city. And it's years now, and it's, we're still waiting for little things like how to get with your bike to a stop sign and not have to get off your bike, go around and get back on it in order, because there's no way to, to do it properly because of the way it's structured. So these are the things. And finally, getting more creative on how you get responses from people. These sixty-two responses online. You didn't want to pay attention to three hundred and fifty responses. What are you going to do about setting priorities when you have, maybe you'll get a hundred responses? I think this city has to task themselves with getting creative on how to get feedback from the residents of Half Moon Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Paulette. Next speaker is Heather Prince.
Hello. I just wanted to piggyback on all of those that have spoken before me. I am going to give another vote for a fully functioning updated pool or aquatic facility. Many have spoken about our use, so I wanted to focus a little bit on the adults and seniors. Many of our adults and seniors travel to CSM for senior aerobics, putting more vehicles on the road. Some of those seniors don't even have transportation options. They can't utilize this healthy, low-impact exercise. And a personal note, during COVID, I'm on the Mavericks Swim Association Board. We had a ton of adults and seniors come to me and said it literally saved their life during COVID to have the pool back open, the pool that we have. And I can only imagine that it would have had a greater impact if we had a better functioning pool. I think this is super important to the community, and I think everybody will get great use out of it. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Heather. And final speaker is Rick Hernandez.
Hello. I am a planning commissioner for the city of Half Moon Bay. I am speaking on my own behalf as a citizen. You know, there is lots of, I applaud the outreach, you know, you, you got folks to respond, which is always tricky, and you got sixty-two responses. I think if you look historically at surveys the city's done over the last eight years, traffic is consistently a number one issue, number one concern that people have, especially on the weekends. And, you know, people have been talking about solutions the whole time I've lived here, which is, gosh, about twelve years now. So I'm still new to Half Moon Bay. But we haven't really made any material progress. It's gotten worse. And so I, I'd like us to really work, I'd like to see us work with Caltrans to come up with some creative solutions on the highway. Maybe create a sighting, maybe create a trolley system, something where you have a dedicated line so people can get up and down the coast quickly and faster than taking a car. Because we need, we do need to get cars off the road. And one of those solutions could be improving the connectivity of the city through the Coastal Trail, through the eastbound trail system, through the implementation of the bike and pedestrian master plan, as Paulette mentioned and as Hillary mentioned. We've done most of the homework. We know what needs to be done. We need to implement those plans and accelerate them. You know, it's unacceptable to me that the crossing at Highway One and Poplar is still as dangerous as it was fifteen years ago. I've put my kids K through eight walking that trail every, that intersection every day, and hasn't gotten any better in, in the time I've been here. Well, they did put a crosswalk in six years ago, but it's still very, very dangerous. But there are lots of examples where we can improve the connectivity in our city for bikes, for pedestrians, for alternative ways of moving around. And we really need to step, step on the gas on that, if you will, because it's, it's, it's something that we can achieve in our lifetime, and we're really close. And I think the Coastal Trail and the trail system we have isn't one thing. It's a series of trails. So connectivity to Magnolia Park, connectivity to the high school, connecting El Granada to the high school in a way that's safe for kids to bike. These are things that take almost no effort, and we should do them as quickly as we can. I will say, setting aside my personal preference, I do swim at CSM. The parents, the adults I talk to, you know, in my demographic, are very interested in a pool. It's the top thing I hear people talking about after, you know, they already like the trails, but they, in terms of the new thing they want, the pool often pops up at the top of the list. And I know those things are expensive. They can be a boat anchor on, on the, the budget. But, you know, it's worth at least figuring out what are some options and putting them in front of the community. So those are three of the priorities that I think are important, and thanks for letting, listening to me.
Thank you, Rick. We have two more hands raised. First is Jenny Book.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hello, City Council. My name is Jenny Book, and I live in Half Moon Bay. And I'm the parent of a ninth-grade swimmer and water polo player at Half Moon Bay High. And before high school, both of my children swam for years at the high school pool with the Mavericks Swimming Club. And they also did their junior card swimming tryouts at the high school pool. The high school pool gets a lot of use. Adult-lap swimmers swim in the morning hours during the week, and there are four high school water polo teams, boys JV, girls JV, boys varsity, and girls varsity. And there are currently four high school swim teams, boys JV, girls JV, boys varsity, and girls varsity, all currently undefeated in competition, by the way. And there's the Mavericks Club on weekday evenings, where pre-high schoolers swim in groups according to age and skill. And then the adults come back in the evening after Mavericks to swim more. So you can see the pool gets a lot of use. The problem, as you know, is that the pool isn't big enough or deep enough to hold swim meets or to play water polo in. And this Friday, when Half Moon Bay High has a home swim meet against Cappuccino, they'll play it at Cappuccino because they can't play it at home. The pool at our high school can't accommodate it. As you've heard in prior listening sessions, not only do the athletes need a proper pool, but the community wants and needs a pool too. For swim lessons for kids in the community who don't know how to swim, and for elderly adults who could benefit from water therapy, and for adults with disabilities who would benefit from being in the water, and for recreational lap swim for people wanting exercise. I don't think anyone knows exactly what this new pool should look like yet, but that's why it's important to add it to your agenda so that we can all figure out what it should be and how to partner to pay for it, and how to bring a new pool to the athletes and the community who all really, really need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. And the final hand I have raised is Sandy Winter.
Hello, everybody. So nice to see you all on the screen. It's Sandy Winter, the Executive Director at Senior Coastriders, as you know. And I'm here to do my job to plug for a lens of age and all policies as you think about how you spend your money and prioritize your time and your resources. So many of the comments earlier today about the benefits that all of, some of the things that you're considering are beneficial across the age spectrum. And so I'm just reminding you that I read this interesting statistic that since 2010, ten thousand people a day have turned sixty-five in the US. So it's a growing demographic. It's not going to go away. And so I'm just encouraging you to consider age and all policies as you make your priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. I have no other hands raised for you.
Okay, then I recommend we take a five-minute break. So see you back here at about one-ten.
We'll take the discussion, the dialogue. We can put things back up on the screen if someone needs to refer to the current work plan. We can do that after each council member takes their turn. And while we're taking notes for now, we are going to do it by council member. So obviously, we can then find themes and threads, but when we put the list back up, we're going to do our best verbatim by council member for now, as you guys each take a turn.
Sounds good. I'll call on Councilmember Jimenez first. Councilmember Rarbock, you had your hand up first. You go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I'm fully aware of all the existing priorities, and I understand that there's a lot of work for staff. And I'm in agreement with just about everything that we are doing. But I think if we're going to step forward and actually make, become a better city, there are a couple of priorities that I'd like to bring up right now. One of them is, has not been on the plate until very recently. And the other is sort of half-buried in the work plan that we've been talked about. So these are new priorities. I understand it's adding to the, the work plan, but I hope the council considers the utility of actually doing it. So the first thing that I would highly recommend is that we begin the process of annexing Moonridge and Miramar. We've talked about this. It's come up when the redistricting, it's come up with the listening sessions. I think from a question of equity, the, the people who live in Moonridge really are next to Half Moon Bay. They feel they're part of it. I think we owe it to them to offer them the opportunity to become part of the city. And similarly, Miramar is another area that's adjacent to the city. The people there often think of themselves as Half Moon Bayers, and we should give them the opportunity to become part of the city. That's, it's a long process. It has to go through LAFCO. I, I understand that it's not going to happen tomorrow, but, you know, a journey of a thousand miles begins with one step. So that's a priority that I think we should put on our plate. The second new priority has to do with the Age Friendly Cities Initiative. One of the groups that have been tasked to come out of this initiative is a medical group. And in particular, this group is going to consider trying to get a serious medical facility on the coast. Serious means urgent care located in Half Moon Bay. It's really important because we don't have that. We've been talking about it. Stanford used to have a clinic. It closed almost twenty years ago. And, and one way we might be able to get that to happen is to get some tax money through having a, the Sequoia Healthcare District extend its boundaries to the coast. So the second initiative that I would like the council to consider is seeing how we can get the Sequoia Healthcare District to extend its boundaries and to work with the, the group that the Age Friendly Cities is going to create to try to get some healthcare facility on the coast. I think that's really important. So that's my contribution. I think that affordable housing and the Coastside Recovery Initiative, all that is, is, is good and wonderful, but I think we need to add to the priorities that we currently have. So, thank you.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you. Well, there's a couple of things that I do agree with, you know, Councilmember Rarbock. But still, you know, I want to continue, you know, my priority is still, you know, housing. You know, housing being my number one priority. And also making sure, you know, I'm on with housing. Now, when I say housing, I'm talking about, you know, affordable housing, going to housing for a community. As you know, we have a large percent, large percentage of our community that live on twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a year, you know, so we need to be able to provide housing, you know, for this community. Also, you know, along the lines comes, you know, when we talk about, you know, health and safety for our community, emergency preparedness. It's something, you know, that we might look at it differently, depends, you know, on what part of our community we're coming from. You know, for me, you know, health, you know, you know, in that community. You know, for me, you know, health, you know, you know, in that community, especially related to my job, when we, when I know the large percentage of farmworkers don't have health insurance. You know, so their health, you know, resources, you know, is, they're very limited. You know, the safety work community, the same thing. You know, I don't know if you remember, you probably will, you know, 2019. You know, during one of our meetings, it was in the late summer, early fall. It was being addressed about, you know, emergency preparedness, you know, 2019. Right after that, you know, Bay City closed, you know, in September, October. You know, followed right after that. I was, you know, very clear in the meeting when I said, you know, this is just a test, you know, to get us on our toes, you know, to be prepared for emergencies. At that time, it was an emergency when Bay City closed because we had about close to 250 people became unemployed in 2019. You know, and, and I was one of the ones that addressed the council at the time, you know, that we had to do something about it, you know, to be prepared to respond to our community. You know, a few months later, you know, we were here with the pandemic. You know, our businesses, you know, were closing. Many of our people became unemployed, were not able to afford to pay the rents. There were many people that we came evicted. So the emergency preparedness comes in that way as, you know, in that area as well. You know, when we talk about emergency preparedness, you know, sometimes we think about you know, natural disasters, you know, fires, you know, that we had the fire of, you know, of August. You know, maybe an earthquake, you know, but the emergencies come in different forms. You know, so it depends how we come, you know, how we see it. So that's my second one, you know, preparing for, for emergency, how is a city prepared for that? Also, you know, economic recovery, you know, going back to that. It's, you know, it's one of my priorities. You know, how are we working with our community to make sure that they have a future, you know, in the coast, in Half Moon Bay? Will they be able to afford to be here? You know, how are we going to provide support to our local businesses? You know, to, or no restaurants, hotel industries, you know, farms? How are we going to do that? You know, are we preparing our community, you know, for that? The other one, you know, traffic and transportation. You know, it's also another, you know, another one for me. When I, you know, talking about traffic, you know, I have been bringing this up for, you know, for a few years already. You know, I have brought it up, you know, to some of you, you know, to the community. And during my, my campaign, I had a conversation with a retired PG&E person. He's a senior, he lives in a senior house in here in Half Moon Bay, you know, on South Main. And, you know, I asked him, will there be a way, you know, for the county, you know, to actually provide more information, you know, as, you know, as access to 280, you said 84, you know, on San Goryo? And he said, absolutely, you know, that's, you know, so asking, you know, about this road, this access, you know, a lot of our traffic that we receive, you know, to drive from there on the weekends comes from the south, you know, from Pescaletto, Leavenport, Santa Cruz, you know, from other, you know, areas, you know, south of Half Moon Bay. So having access to 84, you know, we have, we don't, I don't think politicians will be the ones to work with. It'd be more with Google Maps, you know, to actually put that on the, on, you know, access, you know, how to go from 80, how to connect Highway 1 to 280, you know, through 84. You know, that's, that's another road. That's another way we can go out. 84 has received a lot of work in the last, you know, years to be able to take over the traffic, you know, moving up, you know, north on Highway 1. Transportation, you know, public transportation is, you know, is the, the other one. I know we have addressed that public transportation, you know, but also, you know, earlier, somebody brought up about, you know, the coastal trails. With everything happening right now in the world and in the coast, you know, in our community, you know, coastal trails are going to be the, our future ways of transportation. You know, now having access to, you know, electric bicycles, you know, we need the bike lanes to be safe for, for students, you know, for, you know, students from Granada, Moss Beach, you know, to come to, you know, into town for families to ride their bicycle into town. And also for the families, you know, that live south of town, you know, to come into Half Moon Bay through Highway 1, you know, communities from Moon Ridge, Canana Cove, Ocean Colony. You know, we need to work on that. You know, so that's the other one, you know, transportation and, and traffic. And of course, you know, talking about equity, you know, is the other big one. And that is the annexation of Moon Ridge, you know, and, and Miramar. You know, it's something that we need to start looking into. You know, and I know there's a lot of, you know, in the, Councilmember Rarbock didn't say that. You know, people in Moon Ridge, you know, they consider themselves, you know, part of Half Moon Bay. They work in Half Moon Bay, their student, their, their children, you know, received education in Half Moon Bay. They have the zip code of Half Moon Bay. You know, so they are, they pretty much, you know, they, they, in their mind, you know, they are considered, they consider themselves, you know, from Half Moon Bay. We know there's a lot of work on doing that, but I think we are, you know, on our way. And it is possible. As I understand it, you know, what we need to do to be able to accomplish that, you know, we are about halfway there, you know, for the annexation of these two communities into Half Moon Bay. So that'd be my, my fifth one, you know, the annexation of those two communities to Half Moon Bay.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Penrose.
Yes, I have a long list. But a lot of the things that are on my list are things that were explained to me earlier in the program that we're working on them. So I'm probably not going to go over everything. I'm really excited that we are doing town center planning. I'd love to see McDutra Plaza become some color other than beige. I mentioned the UC Davis and getting them involved. Because I think that when we talk about economic recovery and we talk about the suffering that goes on in this town, we are centered on, a large component of that is agriculture. It's our farmworkers who are barely able to subsist, who don't have housing, who don't make decent income, and working on innovative agricultural programs that would help to, to fortify that industry and maybe make Half Moon Bay, as someone mentioned earlier, an ag center. I think we, we have a great opportunity here. And I don't think we limit it just to farming. I think fishing is another industry that could use a boost too, although it's slightly different. They both are coastal, coastal-related industries. And we are a coastal city, and we've got fishermen and farmers living here. So I'd like us to really look at, at how we get innovative and how we get creative with, with that. A second issue, and, well, it wasn't my issue, but since Councilmember Rarbock brought it up, I would agree with him. Expansion of the Sequoia Health District so that we can get an urgent care here on the coast. We talk about emergency planning. It's, it's, it's baloney if you don't have doctors here for everyday care, not just for emergencies. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is internet connectivity and redundancy. And I think those are critical. If we are going to be talking about attracting businesses and incubator businesses and innovative businesses here, we've got to have reliable, redundant interconnection, internet connection. Another issue that's dear to my heart is coastal trail maintenance. And I spoke yesterday with our city manager and our mayor about a program, a possible program using, utilizing our Eric Devote's abundant grayed workforce to expand their role as trainees in maintenance of the coastal trail. It would, it would be a wonderful thing to see a coastal trail that was actually a couple of feet wider, that was, that was built in a way that was going to last. Our mayor mentioned that she thought it should be part of a larger coastal trail program. And I agree with that. But I think a quick, a quick fix, if we're looking for a quick fix, hiring some, some homeless folks to get out there and learn how to maintain the trail would benefit both the users of the trail and the people that were being trained in terms of their future employment opportunities. So that's, that's another thought that I had. the last thing I wanted to say was, I think when we talk about our problem with housing here on the coast, that one element that we have pretty much ignored, although they have been somewhat vocal, are the landlords. I think that we have a lot of landlords out there that are doing a really good job at taking care of their tenants. I think there are probably landlords that are not doing such a great job. Although I don't have personal experience with it, I hear stories of that. I would like us to find out what the issues surrounding the landlords are in terms of being able to afford to rent affordable apartments and rooms to folks that are, who are so desperately in need and to make it both profitable for them and, and not too expensive for tenants. So it's, it's, it's a voice we haven't heard from. I'd like to bring them to the table. I'd like to hear what they have to say. I'd like to hear what their issues are. I don't want to be assuming issues because we all think we know. I don't think we know. And I don't think we know until we hear from them. So I'd like to see us convene that. And for right now, that's sort of my, my big list.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Branston.
Let me get rid of my hammer. Okay. There's a lot that's already been said that I agree with. Couple of process pieces I'm thinking about here. I think, and then one particular area that hasn't been mentioned today. It's certainly been mentioned by the mayor in the past. I'll start with that. I think, you know, when it comes to providing health services, I think mental health services for children and their families is an acute issue as far as I'm concerned, especially after two years of COVID. And we've heard so many stories. Kids, you know, not having enough space where they live to study or work. Opioid crisis has been mentioned quite a few times by Councilmember Jimenez. And the real sad thing is that mental health issues for, mental health services for children has historically been unbelievably underserved. And a lot of them are supplied through our schools, but you very often get, you know, one social worker or mental, mental health worker for an exorbitant number of students. And I think perhaps we might be able to piggyback on some of the funding and progress we're getting for, you know, cares and see if there might be some other grant money. Because we certainly have the basis for providers here on the coast. But we really don't have enough funding to really expand those services. So that's something I'd like to keep in mind. My feeling is that I'm not sure I want to see separate, some of the things that have been mentioned listed, put out as separate priorities versus tasks under existing priorities. I'm assuming redistricting is basically coming off our list because that's an accomplished number, the fifth one. But instead of having five, you know, I don't see a need to have five priorities. There's so much under the other four priorities and everything else that's been mentioned, I think can be included in other areas, whether it's annexation. I love the idea of expanding the Sequoia District and having a permanent medical facility on the coast. I think that's something that could come under Public Health Safety and Emergency Preparation priority that already exists. I think the Coastside Recovery Initiative alone is just such a huge, and that's just a subtask under Economic Recovery and Development. We have a 50-page report. We have a lot of motivated people. It's for the whole coast, not just Half Moon Bay. I'm concerned about how much, you know, we put on staff by creating a separate priority. And when it comes to annexation, I don't feel like we're 50% there. Councilmember Jimenez, you mentioned that. I'm not sure what you meant by 50% there. There's a lot of interest. But I think, I'm thinking about something Phil Marshall brought up at the last listening session. And I agree with him. You know, he said, there's really a lot of work to do on that in terms of thinking out, figuring out the pros and cons, what the economies of scale are. And when I think about, you know, the real question for me is, when you're talking about Miramar or Moon Ridge, but Moon Ridge seems to come up, you know, most often. Who can provide the services? Because what I've heard is, well, the city can provide better services than the county. And that's the most urgent question in my mind is, is that the case? We are not a full-service city. We are a contract city. The county provides for all the unincorporated areas, emergency services, police and fire protection, medical services. I would like to know a lot more about what does the county do? How much, you know, are they expending capital improvement projects? You know, any roads paved, in Moon Ridge repaved? What does the county spend on that? And, you know, how, how much resources do they have? Because I think they have a lot more resources than we do to spend on those services. And that seems to be the key issue. I'm not sure the city is as well-equipped since we are not full-service. And I think there's a lot of those questions that we should certainly answer in helping figure, figure that out. So I wouldn't put that as a separate priority. I include that we need to do a lot of research first to figure out what the feasibility is. And put that as a, you know, one of the tasks under the other priorities, at least for this coming year. Get all that data so we can have a debate. An informed, not debate, informed conversation about what, because I'm just concerned that, you know, something that might sound like a nice idea puts us in a position where maybe we can't deliver on what we would hope to deliver for that community. And I just don't have enough numbers or data to figure that out yet. So, so yeah, let's find, let's find that out before we start pursuing the actual process of annexation. Let's look at that feasibility and make sure we're making an informed decision. Because at the end of the day, it's the communities that will also vote on whether they want to be annexed. And I think those communities should I think those communities should have all that same information, you know, will this work out better for them or not? And not jump on something, you know, too quickly before we have that data. The issue of traffic keeps coming up. I get a little concerned when I see some of the recommendations is more traffic lights. Every time I see more traffic lights, I feel that as being as detrimental towards traffic as improving it. So I think we have an opportunity. I know in the Poplar project, we're talking about having some traffic circles. And, you know, I lived in Europe for three years and boy, do I love traffic circles compared to traffic lights. And I think it gives us a great opportunity based on what we're going to do in Poplar to study that a little bit, see how people react. There's, you know, it involves a little adaptation going into a traffic circle, and those are smaller traffic circles. So people can practice with it. But we, you know, what about removing a traffic light? You know, if, if we feel it's, they're working out well, you can think about some bigger traffic circle projects like Frenchman's Creek. Then get rid of that traffic light and turn that into, easily turning that into a traffic circle instead. So when we think about stepping outside the box a bit, I think there are things we can do around traffic like that. I think we're exploring an idea that's come up in the past that on the weekends, especially during the summer, we pay for some traffic, uniform traffic control folks and experiment with that and to keep traffic moving in certain areas, certain central areas. So I think I think people would like to see some, some, some movement on getting traffic moving. And some of those, I think, are easy solutions that we could talk about. What else? Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I think it's come up a bit tangentially, but I think LCP implementation. I want to make sure staff has time and resources for that. We're going to have to do quite a bit on rezoning. And it took us eight years to get the LCP done. I think implementation. You know, I love to hear from Jill, et cetera, you know, you know, give us kind of a heads up of how much resources that'll take and what that involves. So I think that's going to be a big chunk of staff time to do that and a lot of city council work and planning commission work. So I just didn't want to forget about that because it's come up in some of our council meetings that wow, implementation is really now the big deal, you know, now that we've got a plan in place. So those are my thoughts for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Brownstone and the Mayor Emeritus. Okay, so I have my list too. My glasses. So for a lot of the things that people spoke about today, whether it's economic development, a pool, agriculture, you need water. And we're getting in a really tight spot regarding water supply. I just heard from the golf course today that they've been told their supply is going to be cut by 50%. At least that's a proposal. I don't know if it's fixed yet. But that's a problem because the golf course is a community economic driver. We, we talked about recycled water before. We've actually talked about it for many years. In fact, the, the public by about 80% said they want to start looking at recycled water. And that's like new 10 years ago. There are a lot of challenges to it. The water district is, is moving in that direction. So I'd like us to spend some staff time working with the, the water district on a plan to bring recycled water to the coast side. It's not going to happen overnight, but it's got a, the ball's got to start rolling because it's going to take a few years. We need to position ourselves for funding. So that means planning. And basically, you know, we're, we're not going to come out of this drought anytime soon. Like anybody you talk to, the scientific community at the state policy level, you know, we're in it for the long haul. So I want to see supporting recycled water as a, as a priority starting now. Related to water, I think the city needs to look at having its own emergency water supply, whether it's for fire suppression or, you know, taps suddenly, you know, turned off. We need some store of water on hand that we can tap. You know, what if there were fires or if there was an incident someplace, happened on a weekend, we had tourists here. You know, we need, I think, emergency water and food supply. Or these staples. So I want us to, you know, have a discussion about that of this year. I think emergency water supply is really critical, but we have our own storage someplace, you know, if we need it. I'm very concerned that the slowness about developing an evacuation plan. The state is looking at another bad wildfire season coming up. You know, we might be lucky, they might get a Hail Mary fast, but I doubt it. And, you know, right now I'm hearing that, you know, maybe at the end of the summer and the fall, we might have an evacuation plan. That's not fast enough as far as I'm concerned. I don't know how we expedite that, but I think we have to make a go at it. I think the whole county process has been way too slow and I'm really unhappy with it. So we really needed an evacuation plan and we needed it yesterday. So traffic is top of mind as we've heard from numerous, you know, input sessions and surveys. The public is really concerned about traffic and you've also voiced that here today. And, you know, as we discussed in the past, adding road capacity, widening roads, as we now know, usually ends up with more traffic. More road capacity, more traffic. It's just, you know, the law of the jungle. So and we're in a particular tight spot because of especially a 92 for lack of right of way and environmental and all that stuff. So that's not a, a, a real solution. So I think we have to do everything we can, our power, to make the current situation function as well as possible for, for residents, you know, and visitors, but, you know, primarily for residents. And I agree with Robert. I think we need, you know, weekend intersection patrol of some variety, whether it's more from the sheriff's office or, you know, private security, we need something. And we need it, you know, not just on holiday weekends, we need it every week. Need it during the week almost anymore, you know, the traffic of the afternoons, trying to go to the grocery store after three o'clock is already a real challenge during the week. But I'm concerned that things are not flowing well during the weekend. And I'm very concerned about Main Street traffic back. So we instituted this signage plan saying no right turns on the weekends. I think it's between three and seven or two and seven or something like that. But the net effect of that is that it backs all the way up Main Street. In fact, it's happening even with the ability to make a right turn unlike Fridays. I tried to go to a restaurant to do a pickup takeout on a Friday three or four weeks ago, and it took me 40 minutes to get to Stone Pine Road and be on Main Street. So I think we need to revisit the, the whole Main Street access to 92. Somebody mentioned previously, we should be looking at a an additional bridge over the Polositos Creek for one way and a one way out traffic control on Main Street. Some, you know, San Luis Obispo design charrette recommended it years and years ago. It still might be, you know, worth looking at. Deborah mentioned the coastal trail and the importance of maintenance. And she mentioned our conversation yesterday. And, you know, the coastal trail is very, very important to our community. And I don't think we give it enough focus attention, correct? It's an, it's part of, you know, economic development. It's recreation. It's tourism dollars, you know, it's access to the coast. It's a lot of things and it, it seems to not get the sort of attention it deserves in terms of construction, maintenance standards, you know, more and more people have electric bikes. You know, that seems to impact, you know, the use of the trail. So I'd like us to establish what I call right now is the coastal trail initiative. You know, it's a focused look, maybe it's by our, our bike and pet committee and the Parks and Rec Commission and the Planning Commission to, you know, do outreach to users to consider a JPA with, with state parks. Because, you know, only a piece of it goes through half Moon Bay, yet everybody uses the whole thing from north to south. So I think we need a, a well organized plan to support and maintain and where we can extend it. And that also covers, you know, links to the trail. So that's very important to me. And I agree with the person who said, I can't remember who it was now. You know, expedite the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, you know, recommendations. This is all part of traffic, by the way, right? If we can't use our cars effectively, then we've got to get on our bikes, we've got to walk. So we already have a Parks Master Plan, a Bikes and Pedestrian Plan. You know, we need to take a good look at those and expedite, you know, where we can, you know, marshal outside funding sources where we can. So that's, that's really important to me. I think we need to prioritize getting rid of the Frenchman's Creek traffic signal. It's a huge bottleneck. I think we're well positioned to do a project there, but we have to make time for staff to, to focus on that. So I agree with Robert there. I don't know if there's something we can work on with Caltrans with signalization, especially specialized signalization, like on the weekends where maybe you know, the lights funneling people on the 92 is on longer. I, I just think we need to look at signalizations as something that might help us. I'm trying to look at everything reach traffic. I think we need to really apply our best minds to it. And, you know, I have made mental health awareness sort of my top of mind priority for the year. And I think parks and recreation, coastal trail, the stuff we've already talked about feed into that, reducing road rage, you know, by addressing traffic. But you, you know, we've been working to try to improve our neighborhood parks because part of mental health and physical health for families and children is, is close access to parks. And I think, you know, we started work on Magnolia Park and the Community Garden. And I'd like to see, you know, that finished. And Deborah Penrose brought up a really good idea about greening Matt Dutcher Park. Seems to me, you know, a little money, not much money, probably we can add some greenery there. Maybe some art, but it needs to warm up. And then moving on from there. I like the idea of helping with the small business program because I think, you know, community vitality depends on thriving small businesses, you know, as opposed to big box retail. So if there's something we can do to help, you know, the CRI initiative with supporting a, a small business assistance program, I think that's a good idea. And related to that, signage on Highway 92 pointing to downtown on Main Street. We keep talking about it, we're not there yet. You know, that's an easy, to me, maybe I don't know all the details, an easy way to introduce people to downtown at, you know, at, at less cost. And that's, but not different people in the community have brought up the idea of having water bottle filling stations as a way to reduce, you know, plastic trash. I'd like us to look into it, you know, given the water supply problem. You know, you might have people going in the middle of the night and filling up giant water dogs. I don't know, but that's just something that I, I've heard from people that they'd like to do. So I'm in sync with people there. Is for the Sequoia Health District or the idea of having some urgent care? Yeah, I think people would like to have urgent care. I haven't heard it brought up at all as part of priority setting. But rather than devote city staff time to that, you know, one thing that was done in the past, you know, it didn't produce any fruitful results, but it is to form a community committee of people who are familiar with the, the health district, familiar with the issues, have a, you know, assign a community task force to look into this and see what's possible, see what's needed, what's possible. But I would say, you know, right now we have a lot of other priorities, so I wouldn't assign that to staff. I think you can have, you know, a community group taking a look at that. I'm glad we're going to be working on our climate action plan. You know, the issue of annexation has come up. I think the public, all the public ought to get a chance to vote on that, not just the affected areas. And I would not look just at Moon Ridge, you know, Moon Ridge produces no revenue for the county, right? So that's one of the reasons for looking at Miramar. I don't know if that would, you know, bring up the, the financial numbers enough. But, you know, why not look at along Highway 92? You know, look at Spanish Town, look at the pumpkin farms, you know, that cause all the traffic in the fall, you know? I, I, I think we should be looking at all the area along 92. It's in our scare guidelines. So we want to get numbers on Miramar, Moon Ridge and 92. But I would not do, look at this in, in a way that trumps everything else that staff is working on. I think there are water and emergency issues and housing issues that really will be sucking up a lot of time and, and traffic issues. But certainly, you know, some research can be done on that, that if, if we're going to look at one area, we should look at all the areas that make sense in terms of the organization. So that's all I have. And I would ask staff whether you want another five minute break just to consolidate stuff.
Matthew, do you need a few minutes, you and Maggie?
I think the, the notes are right now categorized by council member comment. I'm wondering if it makes sense for us to take a minute to put copy and paste them into some categories so we can start to see the overlap and the connection.
Yes, I would like a five minute break.
Okay, we'll work on that. I don't think it'll be done in five minutes, but we'll, we'll get going.
Okay, well then let's take a 10 minute break.
Great, thank you.
Returning at 2:05.
Maggie, I can start with some opening comments to help facilitate and also share a document why they're putting the finishing touches on the list, if that's okay. Are we ready to go? Everyone present?
Everybody is.
Yep. And so I wanted to respond first to a, a, a process or a construction comment that Councilmember Brownstone made in terms of how, you know, the look of our work plan and the idea of do we have, you know, four broad categories or five? And then does something, you know, is something a task underneath a heading or is it a heading in and of itself? I think that's, you know, that, that, that can be addressed. And it's probably important to do so, it doesn't need to be a big deal. But I say that because staff, I think we made an assumption, but we don't want to be presumptuous, so it's up to you guys. We kind of made an assumption that the four, the four categories, not counting redistricting, which Councilmember Brownstone is, is correct and observing that, that will come off the list. We made an assumption that the four categories would, would stay the same and we'd be focusing more on the tasks and programs and, and more detail underneath those broad categories. And I think for the most part, a lot of the ideas that were expressed would work that way. A lot of council members said that they still agree with a lot of the tasks on the list. We heard that from, I think, all of you. And I think most of the new tat, most of the new tasks probably still fall under that. And I think most of the new ta- most of the new tasks probably still fall under that. With the exception and the other assumption we made, and again, we don't want to be presumptuous, so tell us no if you don't want it, but we thought the fifth category would naturally go back to traffic slash transportation. Um, given what you've heard, all the comments that were made, results of surveys. Uh, it's been a, it was the fifth category previously. Uh, it fell off the list last year because there were, um, other important things that the council and the community were talking about last year. You might recall, public safety was a really big item, uh, last year, whereas this year, um, has not been talked about as much. So it did fall off the list and and that's where we put redistricting. Um, but I'll just share my screen briefly just to show a staff brainstorming that we, again, we assumed traffic and transportation would be put back on. If the council doesn't want to do that, that's okay.
Hey Bob, sorry to interrupt, but this seems like some, everything you just said seemed kind of important for council members. Jimenez and Vice Mayor Penrose.
Oh, I I assume they were still there.
They're.
Uh, I'm here, but my, uh, I have to keep my camera off sometimes, my, uh, my wifi. I don't want to be kicked off the meeting if I, yeah, so I turn my camera off.
I wasn't sure. So you heard everything that Bob said from the beginning?
Yeah.
And Mr. Penrose, were you also able to hear all?
I am. I just sometimes have to turn my video off for a minute.
Great. No, sorry, I wasn't positive. So I just.
Thank you, council member. Thank you.
Yes, wifi, no issues.
So can everyone see my screen? Um, I have a Word doc with a list of ten items on it. So again, this was just, um, brainstorming that staff did one day. After the we we received the survey results from the community about tra- traffic transportation, we thought, okay. Uh, it might be obvious that the council re-elevates this to one of their five broad categories. And we, we, um, kind of the same point the mayor made that, okay, what, you know, this is a tricky one. We can't, we're not going to widen roadways. So what should the focus be on? So this brainstorming was simply the kind of things that we've heard, actually. Things that we can do promotes, we can't widen roads, but let's promote safety. Let's promote alternative forms of transportation. Let's work on the bike paths. Let's make a safer, better pedestrian experience. We heard those from council members and the public just now. And again, all this was, was us brainstorming that should that the traffic transportation be re-elevated? That these are the kind of things that we could commit to because we know that widening roadways um, is something that we can't do. And I'll just note here, uh, not meant to go through all of these. The ones in bold are are items we're already working on. So we're already working on things that's already part of our plan. Some projects that that do the the kind of things that have been expressed here. For example, Poplar Complete Streets, it's a project in the pipe. It already just received its, uh, CDP approval. So we're moving forward on that. And it's that kind of project that makes a safer pedestrian neighborhood bike experience for people traveling to and from the beach. So that's just one example. The ones in, not in bold, are not things we're working on. Um, but there are, there are some ideas here that we heard today. Uh, both Councilmember Brownstone and the mayor mentioned, um, number nine, you know, doing ex- doing, um, traffic control at certain intersections during weekends and so forth. Um, e-bikes on trails, actually, they're not allowed right now, so it's something that John is working on to change our ordinance. And so we can start promoting the idea that, you know, e-bikes are a better form of transportation for some people. Um, and that's another thing we could do. So I just share this. Uh, that was our assumption. Again, it's up to the council whether we have four broad categories or five broad categories. We're easy either way. But we would, you know, when, once Matthew and Maggie shared the screen, we are going to be back at the same place we were at the beginning, which is we're going to have a lot of stuff and it's it's better for everyone if if there's some collective agreement and some specific direction to staff of what, you know, what you want us to work on versus what, you know, is not quite ripe this year. Um, as I said at the beginning, we can leave everything on the list, but as you know, that just means everything kind of moves slower and bogs down. So prioritization's the hard part of this exercise. We know that. Um, but very helpful to us if we can, um, get indications on on some of the specific ones. Some of the items that you talked about were very specific. Councilmember Rarbreck had two very specific projects. They have an outcome, very measurable. Um, other ones were broader thoughts, mental health, where it would be helpful for us to receive clarity exactly what it is you'd like us to do and on the, on some of those ones. So with that, uh, I'll turn it back over to the council and Matthew and Maggie, if you're ready to share the screen. Uh, hopefully my kind of pretextual comments, um, helped, uh, will help guide um, this next phase of of kind of talking back and forth and deciding among yourselves, uh, which ones are most important. Matthew, go ahead, or Maggie. Is it Maggie?
Um, I'll share my screen, but I I noticed, um, Councilmember Rarback set his hand up.
Very briefly, uh, Bob, uh, just a comment about, uh, removing, uh, parking on Kelly. Well, remember we took our little tour? I think this should be done year round. I don't see, uh, we get a lot of traffic, uh, to the beach all year round. So, uh, that's a small point, but, uh, if you're going to remove, uh, parking on Kelly, it it should be all year round. And the the other comment was, um, this question of annexation. Uh, is that a separate category i- in your mind, or is that fit under one of the existing categories?
Yeah, yeah, in my mind, and I guess that's why I left it open for your council to to talk about that. Again, we presume that traffic would kind of rise back up to the fifth one, but it doesn't have to. And I guess in my mind, you probably could squeeze annexation underneath one of the existing four categories and make an argument that it fits because it's such a a big, um, broad project. Um, but I I would probably make the argument that it does not fall under one of those four categories. I would, uh, if you were asking me, I would make the argument, it it's it sticks out on its own. Um, because I just don't know which one it neatly falls under. So again, it's kind of semantics. If you ask us to work on it, we'll work on it no matter where you put it. Um, so it's kind of semantics, but it's hard for me to know exactly which one it rationally fits under. And it's and it's very big. It's it is big. So again, I don't want to, you know, um, I don't want it to have have this be a choice between traffic and annexation because there's been so much talk about the importance of trying to do some traffic transportation related stuff. Um, but annexation, you know, yeah, it just feels like it it kind of sticks out as being a little different than everything else. So that's just, that's just my thoughts on on your question. And thanks for noting the elimination of parking. I'll just make the comment that uh, when we brainstormed that, I I kind of got beat back by s- by my department head team a little bit and was simply reminded that, um, you know, this, that would be something that would require a coastal development permit. And the Coastal Commission probably would not look fondly on it. So just a reminder that even the easy things are not always easy. Uh, I wish, wish they were, like eliminating parking on Kelly for safety reasons. Um, but that's an example where, uh, as pointed out to me, um, the Coastal Commission would probably appeal that to themselves and would fight that. So nothing's easy. Um, so with that, thank, thank you for that, those great questions, though, Councilmember Rarback.
I I could argue that traffic and transportation could belong under one of the existing categories.
Yeah.
For the, for the purposes of of this exercise, and as as Bob mentioned, we'll, we'll reorganize this and recategorize stuff as you direct. Um, we, I'm going to share my screen now, what we did, and thank you so much to Maggie. Um, she just ran with the notes and did an incredible job. And then we just reorganized them. We still have them by council member on another part of the document, but they're now all brought into categories that include the five priorities from this year, and then we added a few. So, um, can everybody see my screen? Do I need to zoom it in?
Can you make it a little bigger, Matt?
Yeah, I can do that. Tell me, uh, when we're, does that help? Did that change?
Maybe one more.
Let's see if it fits. Okay, that that's about as wide as my screen gets. Um, hopefully that helps.
That helps me, that's good.
Great. I will just do a quick run through. And then, uh, while I'm doing that, if you can look and kind of see where your comments are showing up, this includes every note we took during your deliberations, and we just did our best to categorize them and apologize if there's some formatting issues or or spelling issues. Flying by the seat of our pants here. Um, just a few comments on affordable housing. We didn't take that as it's not important. It just, there's already a lot of work happening. The work plan is pretty set. We got a lot of direction a week ago from you all. And I think Jill will be prepared to really, uh, beef up the, uh, work plan for this coming year based on what she's already heard. We did hear, um, Councilmember Jimenez. If we understood you correctly, you kind of prioritize number one, number two, as your top priorities. Is that correct? Did we catch that correctly?
Uh, yes, you did.
Okay, so you'll see, you'll see the numbers throughout. Those are Councilmember Jimenez's comments. Um, and and of course, the the new thing we heard from, uh, Councilmember, uh, the the Vice Mayor was, uh, working with landlords. Under pub- public health, safety and emergency preparation, talk about looking at it from a different way, not just thinking about natural disasters, but think of other issues as well. And preparing for those issues, whether it be a business closure or a pandemic, um, some other disaster that affects, uh, vulnerable members of our community. Uh, recycle, exploring recycled water to create an emergency water supply. We also put that under, um, my environmental sustainability. I think it it kind of crosses categories and emergency food supply. Uh, the the biggest one, I think, for this was the the Health Services Conversation, looking at expanding the Sequoia Healthcare District or or maybe the Peninsula Healthcare District. There's a couple of healthcare districts here. But I think the aim is to try to get us a situation to add urgent care, a medical center or, uh, other medical services here on the coast. I I think we heard that across the board. Um, a comment, though, that maybe a community committee would be better at at moving this item forward.
Matt, Matthew, if I could interrupt, uh, the recommendation for one of the proposals for the, uh, age-friendly cities is exactly to form this community, uh, task force. So we don't have to do that. That's going to happen.
Oh, that's already built into the work that that group's doing, which kind of meets what we heard from the mayor about having the community. Great, that's great. This gets to what Bob said. We we heard a lot about mental health, not a lot of specifics. So if this is something we want to move forward, we'd be looking for a little more specific direction. But the mayor did talk about connecting parks and, um, improving parks and outdoor spaces and art to to increase mental health. Uh, we heard about the ongoing opioid crisis and, um, expediting the evacuation planning that's already in place but is is moving more slowly than we would hope through the county process. Uh, not a ton on community climate resilience and sustainability. We heard a comment that moving the Climate Action Adaptation Plan forward is great, and and we assume that that will continue. We're we're deep into that effort and and we need to get that across the finish line. And then, as I mentioned, recycled water exploration kind of crossed both, um, the emergency prep and the community climate resilience and sustainability categories. Um, economic development, uh, Councilmember Jimenez just indicated this was his third top priority. Uh, when it comes to agricultural, uh, issues, partnerships with UC Davis on ag and under the Recovery Initiative. Uh, really creating more of a agricultural center here on the coast and creating better paying housing. Also boosting the fishing industry, uh, looking at downtown planning, um, signage, Mac Dutra being greened up. Um, working on digital infrastructure and, um, supporting small businesses. And just a a minor comment on water bottle filling stations, which is something that I know Public Works has been working on incrementally. And maybe we can talk about how that looks. And then a comment on the fifth existing priority um, on redistricting and the election, dropping that off this year. I will just remind you on behalf of Jessica, I wouldn't be doing her a service if I didn't remind you that for her team, an election is something that they can't avoid and it's a lot of work. So just keeping that in mind as we talk. Um, there's a reason why it it sometimes does pop up as a priority because it is a major lift for them during an election year. Um, and then the the two categories that we added, um, traffic and transportation, lots of comments on that. Um, both vehicular transportation, trails, looking at other ways to to get people around the coast. Um, the comment from, uh, the Vice Mayor about a program with abundant grace to, um, maybe maintain or help maintain the Coastal Trail. Um, looking at Weekend Intersection Patrol, uh, traffic control at our different intersections. Uh, taking another look at Main Street and the intersection specifically with ninety-two. And, um, looking at the Frenchman's Creek stoplight, uh, as it may cause bottlenecks. And then we did add annexations as a separate category. It cuts across a lot of different things. And, um, to to Bob's point, pretty finite, big, big work, but finite kind of controlled, you know, you you develop the plan and you move it forward. Um, and and so for now, it's a separate category. And then just a comment from, um, from Councilmember Brownstone, just making sure that we don't forget about stuff we're already working on, like LCP implementation and making sure we have the staff and resources for this. Uh, so that's all the notes, and, uh, I think we did a pretty good job of categorizing them and kind of syn- synchronizing them. Obviously, we'll keep working on this once we get some further direction from you all. And thanks again to Maggie. Um, she she made it happen.
Uh, thank you, Matt. Uh, could you email that to all the council members? In in real time, so we have that and can print it out maybe during our discussion?
Perfect.
And then, uh, then close it so I can see who's raising hands and things. Okay, questions from council? I see Vice Mayor Penrose.
Yes, um, uh, this was a comment that I meant to make before and didn't when I was talking about my priorities. We've heard a lot from the public about, um, mental health. We've heard a lot about the need for recreational activities and we've heard an awful lot about a pool. Um, a pool, as everybody understands, is an extremely expensive proposition. It's not just the building of the pool, but it's also the operations and maintenance of the pool. So it's not a topic which we can look at and just say, gee, we'd like a pool, let's, let's have one. My thinking on it is, if the community at large wants a pool, that maybe we should be considering a ballot measure where we're asking them, would they approve of a tax um, to be placed on their property tax in order to, um, to go ahead and get a pool. If the community really wants one, then the community must be really willing to spend the money for it. It, City certainly doesn't have it. The school district doesn't have it. Um, so it's going to have to be a combined effort. Um, so that's my thinking, just maybe a ballot initiative might be a way to approach that question.
Councilmember Brownstone.
Um, yeah, just, thanks. One quick comment about what Vice Mayor Penrose just said. The first question is, are we talking a separate pool or improving the pool at the school? That would be your first important question. I think a lot of what I've I've seen a mix. Lately, I've seen more about improving the high school pool. In which case, that comes out of a separate funding piece, which is the Cabrillo Unified School District, which gets a different amount of property tax back, right, from the county. So I'm not sure if that's, yeah, we should just get some more information out for ourselves and the public, maybe. When we're thinking, if we're thinking about putting that on the ballot, because there's multiple sources of funding for that in that sense. That's what I was thinking. Two more observations. So one is, we're potentially going down, going from, to get rid of redistricting, which put it, which would have put us four priorities. We're now considering going up to six priorities by getting rid of redistricting and adding traffic and annexation. So just want to make that observation that going down from thinking one off, which would have left us with four, and now going up to six. So something to think about in terms of staff and resources. I, and again, I'm still not sure about, I'm, I don't fully understand whether we consider annexation of both Moonridge and Miramar at the same time or one at a time. If it's one at a time. It's. I don't know, a different model comes up. If it's one at a time. If I'm looking at Moonridge, which is entirely. Low-income housing, it could come under affordable housing. When you were talking earlier, Bob, about, does it stand alone or could be incorporated under something else? So that's just an observation I'm making versus. Might fit very nicely there. Finally, under Health and Safety and Emergency Evacuation, what Mayor Ruttig brought up. Another bullet point, I think that would be good to put under there around fire and evacuation. Is I know there's a lot of coastal. Coastside issues around eucalyptus mitigation. I know El Granada. And I don't know, you know, is eucalyptus mitigation something that should be considered as a coastside issue separately? Versus just, I mean, Half from Bay separately versus coast side? Because these groves are everywhere. There's certainly quite a few within city limits. Some are located right next to residential housing, some aren't. But if there's some sort of coastwide mitigation plan, we might want to really keep our eye on that. And make sure, you know, if there's funding coming from. Fire, coastside fire protection, state, regional, whatever. How we can make sure we're included in some of that and what that looks like. Because it's very expensive. And they create a potential nightmare. If those start going up and how quickly those embers spread in the fires. So I'm just thinking, Matthew, maybe just add that as a bullet point next to the evacuation, this whole eucalyptus mitigation piece. That's it. Thanks.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you. So a couple of things on the annexation of, you know, when talking about Moonridge. I visit Moonridge more than I visit the Miramar area. So I know the, you know, the county line, but there's one, you know, the main road, the main entrance, you know, to Moonridge. It actually within city limits. I don't know if you visited Moonridge recently, but the road is pretty bad. And that's the city, does not count me. There's a few things that are happening that will benefit, you know, the annexation. I mean, when I say, you know, we have 50% there because there's a lot of interest. There's information, recent information. That I have found. When Moonridge was built, you know, something that the county did to make it, you know, they say. You know, something for the future, the annexation of Moonridge in Half from Bay. So what I'm, I would like to request, you know, city staff. We can actually put a list of steps. You know, the way we need to take for this and for the annexation, I don't know if it's possible. What do we need to do? What do we have right now? So kind of like, you know, preparing for it, you know, what is a process, you know? That we need to take. So that's one, you know, a request, you know. Not an emergency, but you know, eventually have that, you know, on steps to follow. The other one is when it comes down to the economic recovery, you know, about Main Street. You know, about our downtown businesses, you know, and he was made a comment about Magdutra Plaza. I want to share something with you, you know, among the Latino community, we call that Placita Cultural. You know, we call Magdutra that, meaning, you know, a lot of the cultural events that happen in Magdutra. You know, is done by, you know, by our community. So actually have a, you know, a a request of an initiative, you know, to make a little, a few changes, you know, to to Magdutra. And I see this often, you know, I'm in Magdutra often on the weekends, you know, I'm always walking around downtown. So I mentioned this to Chris Lynn, you know, about a request. And she actually mentioned to me that is, you know, she likes it, you know, she likes the idea, an initiative that I want to present. You know, one thing I've noticed when I see, you know, visitors on the weekends, you know, holidays. I see, you know, community, I mean, people that, you know, downtown, trying to look for a place to take a picture. You know, when they're downtown Half from Bay, you know, it's something's missing, you know. So actually, if you see my shirt, you know, it has H and B on it, you know, done by one of our local small business, you know, owner here in Half from Bay. Farming, fishing, you know, surfing, you know, something that represents our community. So what I've shared with Chris Lynn, you know, is about having these three letters, H and B. You know, at the corner of Main Street and Kelly. You know, something that could be representing our community, you know, the horse. At the business on Lemus Farm is beautiful. I really enjoy watching the horse. Through the years, how it changes, you know, for different season, different celebration. And we can do something similar, you know, with our H and B letters, you know. You know, representing our community, something colorful, you know, right there at Magdutra Plaza. Placita Cultural, you know, that can say, you know, we celebrate, you know, Fourth of July, we can say our holidays. You know, or flag, you know, on the on the letters, you know, something from our community. And to be representing and give color to a to the to the area or community. So no, and you know, and people will enjoy it, you know, they're really enjoy, you know, taking photographs. You know, picture, family pictures, you know, from visiting Half from Bay. There's not a lot of places in downtown Half from Bay to take family pictures. And that would be one of the, you know, I think would be with something we can definitely, you know, visit, you know, explore, you know, and ideas. But yes, the fact of having, you know, there are three letters, you know, maybe three, four foot. High that we can, we can really enjoy, you know, visual, you know. That we are really welcoming community, you know, to everybody. Yes, an idea.
Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez. Councilmember Rarback.
I completely agree. When Magdutra Plaza was upgraded in quotes. And the beautiful mosaics were destroyed. I was just furious about that. We had a really welcoming, sort of funky downtown plaza. So I think what Councilman Jimenez just said makes a lot of sense. We we need to have a welcoming, beautiful, green. Plaza that that represents what what this coastside community is all about. The other comment I want to make is in regard to what Councilman Brownstone said. Sure, any discussion of annexation would require a careful. Probably from a careful. That there would be a. A discussion, not a discussion, but 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 a. Financial and economic assessment of what. Trying to annex Moonridge. And I agree that with the mayor that the houses along Highway 92 and the. Farm stands along 92 would also be, should be incorporated in this analysis. And 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 Miramar. You know, you get three bangs for the buck. We would hire a consultant firm that does this sort of thing, that makes this kind of analysis. We wouldn't just go into it blindly. We would know what the economic and political consequences of doing this. But I think it should be done. I think it's important, and there's no reason to wait. The Redistricting Committee was very clear that this was a sensible thing to do, and I agree with that.
Just a heads up, Councilmember Jimenez, his internet dropped. He's trying to get back into the meeting, so just be aware, he's not currently in the meeting.
Thank you. So. I I think it's good to add, you know, transportation back in as a category, but I would call it. Transportation, circulation, mobility, right? Because we're going to be focusing on the mobility piece, not the road wide. So to make it just like traffic. Just focus on vehicular traffic doesn't do it justice.
I like that name. Circulation, mobility. Got it.
Yeah, and as far as mental health awareness. So we already have some things going. Certainly, we want to, you know, help find continued funding for the CARES program, if in fact it's. Being used and successful, you know, we're going, I know that staff is already working on. Mental Health Awareness Month in May and working up an educational program, so. Parks isn't, I think the notes misrepresented as parks being the only thing. But I feel that outdoor experience and outdoor recreation is critical to mental health. And you can read lots and lots of material out there that documents that. And I know that there are many people who live here who feel blessed having lived here during COVID. And that was, you know, that experience, being able to get outdoors or go to the beach or walk on the bluffs. That help people get through this struggle. So, you know, that's why I think recreation and parks is is key to supporting, you know, social cohesion. And 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 community mental health and for all ages too. And then. Back to the issue of annexation. The notes say, launch the annexation process. I think that's going too far too fast. I think what we're actually saying is, you know, assess the feasibility. Now, we haven't heard from the rest of the community on this, and I'm still thinking that. We want to take this to the ballot ultimately. Certainly, as Harvey pointed out, having Moonridge, Miramar, and the area on 92. Gives the public a lot more to consider. In terms of, is this a feasible viable thing? So that's why we don't want to just look alone at Moonridge, and I don't think that's a good idea. But I think to characterize this, you know, we don't want it to go out on paper tomorrow. We've launched the annexation process. Where did that come from? We're not hearing that from anybody except for a couple of people on the Advisory Committee and, you know, a couple of councilmen. So I think we need to marshal information that helps us make the right decision. Not characterize this as launching the annexation process. That's it.
Madam Mayor, members of council, maybe I see Councilmember Rarback raise his hand, so wait.
The the list that Matthew put up is really kind of throwing the kitchen sink at our priorities. Some of them are wonderful, but, you know. It's unrealistic to think we could do all of them. And if I were to think about removing them. Recycled water, while I'm 100% in favor of doing it. In order to get it done, you really need cooperation between the Water Agency and the Sewer Agency. And the way things are going with our sewer agency right now, I don't think we're going to get that cooperation. So rather than spend staff time and. Resources on doing that, I think we have to wait until the situation with the Water and Sewer Districts settles out. And that we actually have a more cooperative infrastructure to do that.
Actually, we don't, Harvey, because the Water District is going to be the lead on it. They've already told us they are going to be the lead on the recycled water. And what they want from the city is. You know, a partnership in the sense that, you know. It's going to have to go through the pipes are going to have to go through the city. We might want to fund a piece of the process. They would probably buy. Treated sewage from Sam. So but but they've made a decision themselves already to move forward as a lead. So what we want to do is we want to be engaged with that to make it make sure it serves the interests of the city. But the Water District is moving forward as a lead. We can't wait. We can't wait for anything to be. Resolved by Sam. Sam, the only footprint Sam has for it in any case is for a small pilot for the golf course. Right? So we have to try something new, and the Water District has already decided to move forward.
I'm sure Sam is going to have to be much more involved, so.
Well, they they will, but the purveyor of the recycled water, CCWD wants to be it. They're moving forward with it. And you will hear more about it, I'm guessing. Councilmember Brownstone.
So I had a question about the recycled water. So is that, in a sense, part of the. Emergency water supply solution that you mentioned earlier, Mayor Ruttig? Is that?
Doesn't need to be, you know, we could purchase water. You know, we'd have to find a place to store it and a way to store it. But I think we need some emergency backup supply of of water. Well, it could, except for, you know, like I said, this is a, the recycled water is a year, years-long process, right? You have to figure out who your customers are going to be, how you're going to pay for it, where the pipes are going to go, you know, that kind of thing. So but in the meantime, I think the city needs a, you know, an emergency water supply. Given that, you know, a disaster might happen or what have you.
Yeah, I agree that emergency water supply, you know, people can forget about that, you forget that you mentioned earlier, but. I couldn't agree more. When you think of all the cuts in water that we're going to get, combined with all the heating. Needs for water, whether agriculture, whether it's drinking water, whether it's fire protection. It's really time to be much more proactive and not reactive and wait till the next fire. I couldn't think of anything more urgent than that. And just one, I agree also with, we shouldn't put annexation out there as we're launching something. I agree with Councilmember Rarback that we're in that assessment phase, you know, of feasibility, especially when we're considering a number of different areas. And the one thing I would just point out in reaction to something Councilmember Rarback, you said, you know, the redistricting committee, you know, approved this idea of. Annexation. I don't, when I was looking back at some of those meetings, frankly, there were a couple of people who did mention that, but. I never really frankly thought it was part of their purview to bring up the issue of annexation around redistricting. Redistricting was really, as we advised, asked them was to focus on, you know, the existing half of the bay, not. Annexation pieces, so I just think. Yeah, so I just have some. Concerns about saying this other group, you know, was pushing something. When maybe it wasn't really part of their purview in the first place. But mostly I want to make sure, yeah, that I think we're in beginning stages, I like Councilmember Jimenez. Point about, let's all be clear on what all the steps. Eventually would look like, and then, which includes assessing the financial, the economic, the political issues. And it is something maybe that we may want to put on a ballot, sort of like an advisory ballot. You know, what is the city think about it? Ultimately. It's the decision of the areas that we're suggesting be annexed that also have to prove it. Approve it. So I don't want to confuse those two different ballot pieces, right? One is, you know, what's what's what? Does the community as a whole think about annexation? Impact on what they feel, you know, our small town feel is all that stuff. But it's a separate and distinct ballot issue, as I understand it. Not advisory, but approving to be annexed by those areas to be annexed. So I hope I'm correct on that, but we're talking two different. Ballots over time, valid issues. I didn't want one getting confused with the other. Because we're also educating the public a bit about that process, so. Just wanted to make that observation. Thanks.
I have a quick clarification that I. I, I have a quick clarification that I wanted to make and then, and then a couple of questions, if, if you all don't mind. Um, my first clarification is, um, for the public's purposes, this list that we created here and, and that I displayed is only the list of the council member comments. We captured the notes and the comments from the community and they'll be included in, they'll be added to the written report for the listening sessions that we always do. Uh, but this list is specifically the list that the council put together as they made comments. And then in line with that, I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss something. Did any of the council members make a comment specific to drainage, um, planning? I don't remember hearing that, other than in the public comment.
No, and, um, I don't think that's necessarily an oversight. I mean, we do, we do have some work ongoing on drainage. And, you know, we have been asked by One Shoreline and have been talking to Senator Becker's office about getting funding, um, for work on, um, Kehoe Drainage, for instance, right? That's, that's potentially a big project involving Beechwood, the Kehoe Channel, potentially, you know, reconstructed Kehoe Channel, et cetera, et cetera. So that's in early stages of discussion, you know, to bring it to the council at some point. And then the city is doing work on Public Works Program at, um, Pullman. I know that we're working on that. The Poplar Gateway Project has a, a drainage component. Now, some people have asked, do we need to like bring back the entire, um, stormwater plan? And I don't know the answer to that question. I know that we need to deal with atmospheric river type storms, which was, which is where we're headed, uh, more regularly during our winter months. The precipitation regime is, is turning into fewer, but more intense storms. And, and does our drainage system, you know, are we ready for that? So I think everybody agrees that we need to be looking at that. Does that need to be called that as a priority? Or is that already built into the, the work program? Uh, and if it is built into the work program, maybe we need to call it, you know, the, uh, the stormwater program so that people understand, you know, what we're doing. But I would ask the council, do you, do you feel a need to add that as a priority? Do you feel like we're already addressing that in our Public Works Program? In our sustainability program? I would ask staff, do you, do you have an opinion on that? City managers?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, 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 I thought this was true, but I also just got a confirmation text from, uh, Mr. Doughty that, yeah, uh, an update of the drainage master plan, and I don't think we should belabor it now, we are running out of time, uh, is already on the list. So the fact that none of the council members brought it up as a priority now is okay. Um, it was already being rolled into our normal course of work. And so we don't need to hear from the council, whether it's a high priority or a low priority. Uh, it's already off, it's already there.
If I, if I could just say this, in the mid-year budget, you approved funding for the update.
That's right.
So.
I knew I saw it somewhere.
So you, you prioritized it already, so we are moving forward. So all done, well, all done.
Thanks, John.
At least funding.
Yeah, and then, uh, you know, as, as, as Matt alluded to, so, you know, staff has a job ahead of them, taking all this information and, you know, packaging it into a realistic work program. And it really should be over, you think, two years or one year? I mean, there are some things that maybe are more urgent, but, but this, the lists are going to come back in a more organized form. And that's kind of how we did it last time, I think, as I recall.
Ag- agree, Madam Mayor, and I know Matthew's going to have to leave in about ten minutes, and so he'll, he'll stay till the end. But if either he or Maggie could put up the, the list again, um, maybe I can add a few comments to help us get from point A to point B.
Maggie, could you pop the list up at this point that we want to drop off? I'm not disrupting the meeting.
And, and while they're doing that, I'll make a, I'll, I'll make a clarification comment. Um, I think it's important, um, for the discussion. Councilmember Jimenez, uh, made the comment about the road. He's partially right. And if you can, uh, expand that to a hundred and fifty percent, that'd be great. So we, we can all see it. Uh, he's partially right. Um, um, Quick and Dirty, Ma's, the city owns about a third of that road. Uh, so maybe about two thirds of the public section is still county. And the mayor and I recently met with Supervisor Don Horsley and kind of pushed him that, you know, hey, this road's in really bad shape. You need to make it a priority. So we agree with Councilmember Jimenez. Um, but, but clearly, uh, it's a challenge either way. Because when you talk about it in the context of annexation, it's a liability. And so right now, as I said, about a third is city and we probably need to look at our third. But the county needs to look at their two thirds as well. And it's not, and as anyone knows who's been out there recently, that road is in deplorable shape. And we made the point to Supervisor Horsley, we jokingly said, it's probably the worst road in your district. So can you give us some, some love there? So we'll see, but I, but that's about, that's the breakdown of that road. It's a liability for both entities right now. Um, so with that, I, I just wanted to cut, circle back to the list. We are running out of time and the mayor said it right. We will, um, we will come back with a work program at an upcoming council meeting, that reshuffles these items and puts them on a list. And I, I will say, um, that when we come, I, I, we're, we're leaning towards a two-year work plan and we will make it really clear, like what we can accomplish in year one, what we can accomplish in year two. But I will, um, say some of the things might fall off the list when we come back. That doesn't mean we lost them. We'll keep this list and we'll bring it to the council, so you're not losing sight of anything. Um, but I, I will say, and I think Councilmember Rarback noted it too, yeah, there's clearly a lot of wish list items on here and some big things. And there's more, to my original point, when we opened the meeting, there, there's clearly more than we can do. And so, uh, it would be nice to get a little more direction on prioritization, but given that we're running out of time, uh, I'm comfortable with us coming back to you and telling you what we can do and what we can't do, just based on our capacity. And then you can, you can direct accordingly and, and change if we don't get it right. Um, but just be ready for that. I, I have a feeling the staff's a little overwhelmed right now by this list. It's a lot. And so we'll take that stab, uh, to narrow it down and, and be realistic about communicating to you, um, what we can do, what we can't do, and what has, what needs more clarification? Cause some of these tasks or directives might need more clarification. The two, two items I would like more direction on, and, and as you peruse the list, if, if any council member wants to say, you know, that's a low priority for me, uh, that would be nice to hear that, what, what, what low, what, what on here is a low priority? Um, but on annexation, um, I think we heard enough, but I just want to clarify the semantics a little bit. I get, I get the point that we're not approving annexations. We're not launching, I think was the word. But I do want to, um, kind of give it from staff's point of view, just generally, when we do this work and, and we, we're either working on something or we're not working on it. Um, there really isn't a gray area. Uh, it's a light switch. So either the directions to not work on annexation or it's to work on annexation. And I get, we want to be careful of words like launch and we've approved it and we're supportive of it. I understand that. Um, but once we start studying, we're working on it. And there's going to be numerous points in the process, uh, for decision-making on no or, or to, you know, go or no-go, numerous processes. And it was already mentioned that one idea would be to take it to the voters, an advisory measure, I assume, uh, to see. And that, that would, that's one whole step right there. I, I doubt we would even make November. And so we're talking, you know, two Novembers from now, just on that question of, you know, how does the community feel about that? So I, I, I think we have the direction. It sounds like in, in my lingo, um, the council wants us to put this on the list. And, um, to answer, to just answer, I think, what was already said, I think Councilmember Rarback noted it. Uh, what, what we would do then, if that's the case, is when we bring back the budget, uh, I would recommend a chunk, uh, haven't decided how big of a chunk, but a chunk of money, uh, will be part of the budget that you see so that we can hire the appropriate consultants and experts, uh, to do the analysis, uh, that you've already talked about today and take those first kind of steps. Um, so that's how I see it going, uh, if, if, again, if the direction is, you know, the way we look at it, we're either working on it or we're not working on it. If, if the direction is to put it on the list, then that's what you would see from us is, uh, something in the budget with more clarity on what those next steps would be. And then I do just want to, I don't want to make it more overwhelming or worse, but there is an item that, um, didn't get called out. So maybe that means it's not ripe and that's okay. I'm certainly not advocating for this. Um, but we did test the water with a tax measure, um, to tax vacant houses. That would be under the housing category, uh, the idea being that, that would generate revenue that we would then put back in our affordable housing fund. Um, didn't come up today, that doesn't mean it's not important to you. I, I totally get that. Um, but that's another item where we, we really need the direction. Either, we're either working on that or we're not. And that would, there is deadlines to get that on the November ballot. So if that falls off, that's okay. Um, but if that's something the council would like to, uh, you know, us to work on with a potential measure for November, we, we would need to know that today. So those are my, my comments. And Matthew, we, we would come back with our shot at the work plan, um, sometime before the, the budget. Um, correct, maybe May, okay.
Yeah, we do that in May typically.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, um, I would just agree with Bob. Um, I'm not sure why the item didn't come up, but I think we need to prepare a ballot initiative on tax, taxing empty houses.
Councilmember Rarback?
Uh, I agree with, uh, Deborah. Uh, it's, it's important not only for raising revenue, but to improve our housing stock. So I'm in favor of putting that on the ballot.
Uh, for the record, I'm against it. The public has already said, you know, only forty-seven percent of them support it. I, I just don't see it increasing. Usually things start decreasing before a ballot increases. So I, I don't think the public's ready for it. Anybody else? Okay, so it's exactly three o'clock and we can adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank, thank you, members of council. Uh, we'll be back to you as directed with the, with the work plan, proposed work plan.
See you later.
Thank you.